This is the 35th meeting of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel. This is Monday, June 22nd, and we're meeting in regular session. Would we all stand and have our invocation by Reverend Warren Litchfield? Pledge allegiance. Reverend Litchfield?
O my God, we gather this evening here in the presence of the city. We all bow to Reverend Mayor, the President, and members of the City Council, and all in authority, granted with an essential justice, strength, and wisdom. They perform their duty with heart, all like people. We command this nation, our armed forces, our own force, and our five enemies, and they work for care and understanding. Remember those who lie upon a pedestal, flings and covers them. Here I pray, and biding, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
Mr. Lez?
Here.
Ms. Querry?
Here.
Mr. Smalls?
Here.
President Rex?
Here. Please note for the record that if you wish to speak tonight's meeting, there is a sign-up sheet back on the little table in the rear, on my right, your left, and I will restrict to each speaker two minutes unless otherwise noted. I'd like to call for the approval of the meetings' minutes of the 33rd meeting of the Mayor and City Council, being of Wednesday, May the 27th, and the 34th meeting on June the 8th. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Querry?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Rex?
Yes. May I have a call for the report of the Mayor and City Council? Ms. Nicholas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to wish all the Fathers a Happy Father's Day, and I'd also like to say that I attended the Remnant Fellowship Worship Center's Community Day and also their church service, our Welcome First Lady and Elder Gray, excuse me, Evangelist Gray and his wife. Thank you for coming. And I'd also like to recognize Pastor Blaylock from Element Church. He's new in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lez?
Thank you, Mr. President. June 14th, I attended the Senator Bernie Fowler annual weigh-in to check the clarity of the Patuxent River that was held at Jefferson Patterson Park and Museum down near the Solomons. The senator weighed in and lost sight of his white sneakers at 44 inches, close to the record of 44 and a half inches we had at the 1997 weigh-in. So we're doing something right. June 18th, I attended the Community Relations Meeting here at City Hall to discuss how we can improve the environment of our Grove neighborhood for the peace and enjoyment of our citizens and residents. I want to thank those who have taken the time to email me on the issue of maintaining the Laurel train station, marked "train stop." I alone, with my council colleagues, will be pursuing this issue, and with the help of each of you, we will prevail. Finally, I wish Governor Hogan well and a successful and speedy recovery as he faces his formidable health challenges. My prayers are with the governor and his family. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lez. Ms. Querry?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the 10th, along with my colleagues here on the dais, we had a grand reopening of Cherry's Sub Shop, and it's very enjoyable to meet the owners of 45 sub-shops here in Maryland, and they're from Gaithersburg, a very interesting gentleman. Congratulations to Joe Robinson, former mayor, who received the Dedication Award to the Fire Chiefs book down in Ocean City for the annual convention. On Saturday, I attended the Lars 5K, and there was 140 registered runners and walkers, and it was actually officially sanctioned as a full 5K this year. So they had all the bells and whistles, so that was wonderful for them. I hope they made lots of money. We won't see you until after the 4th, so I wish everybody a safe and happy 4th. And again, I echo my colleagues. Thoughts and prayers are with the governor at this moment and his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smalls?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the opportunity to attend the First Generation College Bound's 25th anniversary. For those of you who may not be familiar with First Generation, it's a program that works with beginning our middle school students and prepares them for college. It works with them to get scholarships, funding, and it doesn't just leave them at the doorsteps of a college or university. It also works with them very closely as they are pursuing their college degrees. Several graduates, in fact, there were a number of graduates who were there that not only had graduated from high school, but graduates who were graduating from colleges and universities with advanced degrees. So that was really a pleasure to attend. I had the opportunity also to speak at the 6th grade commencement at Scottstown Hills Elementary School, and that was certainly a pleasure for me twofold. I used to be the PTA president there many years ago. My grandson CJ, who many of you know, was graduating that day, although he didn't want me to speak. But it was a very, very good program, and I was happy I was asked to participate. I also attended with my colleagues the Community Relations Meeting we held here in these chambers and discussing ways in our community that not only can't, that we can better serve, but improving on our relationships with our community at large. And I'll join my colleagues in wishing our governor well as he begins a very, very serious journey in fighting the cancer that he's been diagnosed with. That's my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. I too would like to send our prayers out to Governor Hogan for a swift and steady recuperation period. I want to let everyone here in the city that usually attends our 4th of July celebration to get there early and get your place in line, because Bowie is not going to have their 4th of July celebration this year. So we kind of feel like that all the people from Bowie are going to come to Laurel. So I encourage everyone to get there early and protect your family from the sun as much as possible and hydrate yourselves. I'd also like to, again, echo a little bit of what Mr. Lez said. As some of you may know and some of you don't know, there is a move afoot by the state of Maryland to close our train station here in Laurel and to move it over to the Laurel Race Park. We are fighting that very vigorously. We're encouraging everyone to come to a press conference that we're going to have this coming Wednesday at the railroad station at the end of Main Street. It'll be at 11:00 a.m. Parking will be provided. And we would like to also note that anyone wishing to side with us on this issue and to save our train station, contact the Secretary of Transportation for the state of Maryland. That's the Honorable Peter R. Rome and the Honorable Dennis R. Schrader, both Secretary and Deputy Secretary respectively. They're at 7201 Corporate Center Drive, Hanover, Maryland 21076. We are going to be presenting postcards that you can mail to them that will say, "Attention, please help us save our train station." It's a valuable link to our economic development on Main Street and in the city, and it's been here for 180-some years and has always been active, both in freight and in passenger travel, and we are going to do everything in our power to see that that doesn't happen, that it moves. So I encourage you all to participate with us, and with that, that's all I have as a report. At this time, I will open the general public hearing, and it's 6:05, no, 6:09, excuse me, and I have Pastor Christopher Miller signed up to speak. Pastor? Yes, please. And there's a little button on the front. I don't believe the light's on, but we'll find out. Is that a green light on there? Okay, fine, Pastor, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Hold it down. We'll get someone. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pastor Christopher Miller from the Remnant Fellowship Worship Center here in Laurel, Maryland, on 4th Street. We have recently relocated from Bamarboro, Maryland, to Laurel, Maryland for a better location so that we can be more visible and to really come to Laurel and help the citizens of Maryland. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. On Saturday, we experienced a great event in the city. We opened up our doors and sort of introduced ourselves here in the community by having a Community Day right on our site on 944 4th Street. It was a wonderful event. It was well-attended. The citizens of the community were very much engaged. We had a moon bounce for the kids. We had free food. We had gifts and prizes, many of which were donated by businesses right here in the community. So the event was very well-attended, and the citizens really stated that they needed something like this. In fact, many of the Spanish citizens attended the event, and they were thrilled that there was a church that they don't have to drive to, but they can walk to. So we believe that right there on 4th Street, we can serve that community, and we're taking 4th Street as a matter of fact. We're going to take 4th Street and extend to 8th Street and then go beyond on 198. But we're here just to serve the city of Laurel, Maryland, and we want to know from you how we can participate in making this community better.
Okay.
And then, by the way, I do want to mention that we are partnering with another church in Prince George's community, and it's called Convoy of Hope, and that's going to be in September of this year. It's going to be a large event where there will be healthcare services, there will be entertainment, there will be breast, I think, breast health services for those who might have breast cancer. There will be haircuts, there will be a kid zone. It's a big event that's at the Evangel Temple Church. It's in Temple here in Maryland. That's one of our partner churches. What that church stated to me, the pastor of that church stated, that he would supply buses, at least two to three buses, to come and take citizens of Laurel, Maryland down so that if they need any of these free services, they can partake, and then they can come back and certainly will serve any needs that they might have at our church.
Thank you. Well, we welcome you to our community and hope you do well, and I'm sure that you will be successful, and there is a lot of people that need some good outreach, and we know that from our pressed experiences, and we will try and include you in the things that we have here in the city.
I thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have Mr. Ryan, looks like Blaylock, 14240. Yes, sir. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Would you say, state your name and address for the record, please?
Ryan Blaylock. I live over Emerson at Cherry Lane, so 14740, 4th Street is primarily where we're at. I'm a pastor in the area as well. It's weird, I'm standing up saying, echoing much of what was just said. The name of our church is Element Church. We're going to be launching at the new town center in the movie theater, starting in September. I've stopped by there. We've had a chance to serve over there a couple different times. Our goal for the summer is to build our team and get to know the city by serving the city. I come from a church in Columbia where we've served in the local high schools. We worked with Hammond High School, serving their teachers, both with like lunch before, the week before students were back in school, we had the opportunity to do lunch for teachers and staff over there. We did a lot of like tissue box drives and things like that, stuff that teachers were stuck providing. We were just wanting to help them out. And so we've taken the opportunity to serve them. We've also served alongside homeless projects. We've served in many different areas, and we're going to be right there on 4th Street too, looking at 4th and 5th and some different things. And so if there's any way we can serve, we just want to be here to serve. I met with Councilwoman Nicholas a couple weeks ago. Somebody suggested I speak with her, and she suggested I come here, so I just wanted to come and introduce myself, let you guys know if there's anything that we can do, we would love to serve. We did have an opportunity, the 14th, we took an opportunity, did some yard work for a lady on 5th Street who just needed it. It was four people in their 20s, but they, nobody knew how to do yard work. The yard had kind of got out of hand, and so we took the time just to mow grass and pull weeds and plant some new flowers, and so Jody and her friends have some new things there on 5th Street, and so we're excited to be here, and if there's anything we can do, please let us know.
All right, thank you very much, Pastor. Appreciate it, and welcome to Laurel. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on any topic? Yes, sir, come forward and give me your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Chuck Hajar. I live at 14607 Cambridge Circle in Laurel, across from the high school in Laurel Lakes. I've lived there since 1997. That development's been there since 1986. It's a dead-end street, probably about 60 or 70 townhouses, and I guess it's a state street, but all of a sudden, somebody called the city, made some kind of inquiry about the parking situation, the parallel parking in the street, and one day I wake up and I got a $35 parking ticket on a place where I parked for the last 18 years, and when I called the city council, the answer is, "Oh, we did an investigation, and you can't park there anymore. It's too close to the corner," or something, and they've taken away about 30 parking spaces. And right now, in the corner where I live, there's two vacant houses where nobody's living, and there's no parking spaces now, none. So when these two people move in and bring four or five more cars, I don't know where people are going to park. It's getting really bad, and I can't seem to get a satisfactory answer. I don't know exactly what the law is. When I look at what somebody told me today, is that you can't be 10 feet from a corner. There's long straightaways where they're saying there's no parking. So I'd like to ask the city, I don't know who put the signs up, to come and reinvestigate that and take a look at it, maybe meet me there and explain to me what the law is, because I have a bunch of neighbors that are ready to come to the council meeting and complain about it. I told them I would come here tonight and ask what we can do about it, but it's really going to be a dangerous situation where people may come home from work late at night and they can't park. They might have to park at Laurel High School or something and walk down to the place, because there literally is no parking right now with five cars coming in the next two weeks. So I'm just asking for help.
Have you talked to your homeowners association?
I did, but they said it was the city that came in there and put the signs up.
Yeah.
Homeowners Association had an inquiry from a resident there, saying it looks to be a little bit dangerous sometimes around these curves, although we've never had an accident. That's all they did. The HOA called the city, and they came out and said, "Oh, we should have had signs here," and they started putting "no parking" signs up all the way around. The HOA can't do anything about it. Called the city council person, I don't know who I talked to, a lady, was it you? I talked to somebody, and they told me our hands are tied. It's a law. The city lawyer told us that we can't take the signs down, and that's it. I'm looking at where they put the signs up, and it just doesn't look like it's uniformly done if that's what has to be done. The HOA has nothing to do with it. I already talked to David Bader at the, I mean, David Vaughn at the D.H. Bader Management Company. He says it's the city to put the signs up, and they have nothing to do with it. That's what he told.
Mr. Lez?
You know, there's a line of sight issue involved here. It's not just how close is it to the corner, okay? Somebody complained. Okay, that's number one. If I remember correctly, you have garages, is that correct?
Some people have garage.
They don't park their cars in the garages. They've got all their stuff in the garage, okay? When we counted those, because I was on the planning commission when we did that, we allowed them to count the garage as a parking space. We don't do that anymore. We had to change it, because what we found over the years was that residents, owners, would not park their cars in the garage. Very few do, okay? And in fact, I think I spoke to the city administrator about this. There's a line of sight issue.
Right.
That they're trying to deal with, and I would suggest, has David been to see us, Christie? I would suggest David Vaughn come and speak to Christie Mills, the administrator.
That's who I talked to.
Yeah, yeah, and because David used to be one of the planners here.
Okay.
Okay? And maybe there can be some adjustment, but again, there is a line of sight. I went down there after I got the phone call from one of your neighbors. I did get a phone call.
Okay.
And there's a line of sight issue. Now, I don't know if there's been any accidents there or not, but that started out because I think somebody complained, okay? We didn't go down looking for.
Right, I understand that, but I think they just asked you to look into it, and then all of a sudden, there's no parking on the whole circle.
Yeah, well, I think what they were trying to do is trying to put the "no parking" signs to allow line of sight, appropriate line of sight. So my suggestion, because David's a pretty good fellow, is ask him to come see Ms. Mills, Christie Mills, the city administrator.
I'll do that, but she told me that she can't do anything. She said it's a state law, and your attorney told you that it's illegal.
Well, we follow federal laws on those things, stoplights, stop signs, line of sight. But again, I would suggest that David come speak to Christie Mills about that, okay? That'd be the first step, okay?
All right, that's what I'm.
But I didn't go down and look. I understand the problem.
If you went out there now and saw how wide it is in some of these areas with "no parking," I don't think it's a sight, myself. I want to understand why they did it.
Okay.
I'll get David to come here.
Appreciate that.
Two weeks, right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Querry?
If David will just call, he can make an appointment to come see Ms. Mills.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I was just going to say, you could also speak to Mr. Farie tonight too, and he'd be happy to explain the signs. Rob Farie, he's head of our Public Works. If you wait until after the meeting.
All right, Mr. Smalls, do you have something?
I just wanted to mention to our pastors who so graciously volunteered support and services to the city, to mention that on August 15th, at Goody Lake Stage, the city is hosting a back-to-school jam where we'll be giving away backpacks filled with school supplies for our school students. So we could always use volunteers to help us stuff backpacks and help us distribute. So I just wanted to make sure that we didn't move too far ahead without making you aware of that event, and certainly gives a good opportunity for members of your congregation perhaps to come out and serve, as well as give you an opportunity to meet people from the community, so.
What time?
Two to six. So announcements will be up very soon on the city's website and other locations around the city, so you'll have ample opportunity to get the word. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under the general public hearing? Seeing no one else, I'll close the general public hearing at 6:22. We'll move on to item number eight, which is the second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1850, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the revitalization overlay area, number R06-01-2012, conceptual site plan and landscape plan for C Street Flats formerly known as 350 Municipal Square, and providing for an effective date. I'll open up general public hearing at 6:23. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the topic? Brock?
Mr. President, revitalization overlay application number R06-01-2015 was filed on April 27th, 2015 by C Street Flats LLC in care of Clean Bill Capital Management Limited, requesting approval to amend the previously approved pool facility with an outdoor lounge, social gathering area complete with barbecue and fire pit, and which will allow nearly year-round use at the property known as C Street Flats. On May the 4th, 2015, a copy of the application and a letter asking for comments was sent to the City of Laurel Department of Parks and Recreation, Department of Public Works, Laurel Police Department, City of Laurel Fire Marshal's Office, Maryland Office of Planning, Washington Suburban Sanitation Commission, Prince George's County Health Department, Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, the State Highway Administration, Prince George's County School Board, Prince George's County Council, Verizon, Baltimore Gas and Electric, and Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation. Under date of May 5th, 2015, a letter advising of public hearing dates was sent by certified mail to the applicant, the property owner, and all contiguous property owners. All return receipts were received with the exception of three letters which had been made a part of the official record. The file contains a certification of publication verifying that this application in public hearing was advertised in the June 11th, 2015, and June 18th, 2015 edition of the Prince George's Sentinel. A memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission to the Mayor and City Council dated June 10th, 2015 reads as follows. At the regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission held on June 9th, 2015, the following action was taken on the subject zoning application. On motion by Mr. Williford, seconded by Mr. Kish, and carrying on a roll call vote, all members present, the Planning Commission recommended that the Mayor and City Council approve revitalization overlay amendment number R06-1-2015, ordinance number 1850, as presented. File contains affidavit signed by the applicant attesting that a zoning sign has been placed on the subject property and has remained and shall remain until a decision is reached by the Mayor and City Council. That concludes the reading of the file, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. So I'm assuming what I read into the record when I said it was 012012, it's really 2015?
2015, yes, sir.
Thank you. Can I stand corrected? All right, is there anyone wishing to speak on this topic? I like to hear what he says. All right, with that, I'll close the general public hearing at 2026. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Querry?
I recommend approval of ordinance number 1850 as read into the record.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lez. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Querry?
Yes.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
President Rex?
Yes. Item number I, nine, excuse me, second public hearing with possible action on the ordinance number 1851, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition by the city of Laurel via condemnation of 1.036 plus or minus acres of real property located in the city of Laurel known as Dorset Road, which is a private road owned by the Brook Mill Condominium Association, Inc., for the public purpose of making a road, making Inc., for the public purpose of making the road a public road. I've read the title for the second time. I'll open the general public hearing at 6:27. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close at a 6:27 and a half. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we approve ordinance number 1851 as read into the record.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Nicholas? Throw that, Mr. Les. Ms. Querry?
Ms. Nicholas.
Ms. Nicholas, okay. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Smalls?
I vote yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
Ms. Querry?
Yes.
President Ricks?
Yes. Madam Court Reporter, thank you much for your services. At this time, we will take a motion to reconvene the closed session of June 8, 2015. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Querry?
Yes.
Mr. Smalls?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
Mr. Les?
Yes.
President Ricks?
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight. We're going to go into an executive session to discuss an issue we've been working on dealing with real estate, and I thank you for coming.